... Obviously, night out.
Uh, we're awesome. I don't know what my ass is like.
Warmest night of the last couple of weeks unless you had a rash. Still, I'm talking about... I'll say that. General, this is a great cause. It's not fighting for us all the time. And now, um, it's just... It's made a great day of work, you know? Um, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I should, I should, I should. Every month, so. I'm still...
Yeah, exactly. With everything else you've got going on here.
This is... It's been such a long time. It's not that I won't just come back and say... Guarantee at least two times you got three. I felt a little bit... Three is a straight... It's gonna be a travel there somewhere. It's gonna get a side travel, right? I can't fault it. It's just a dream. It's a great deal of... It was really funny. Well, I think it's a... I mean, uh... Um... The code of business is by four eight. I have to say something. Ask something. I'm gonna pass the... I believe we should... I mean, that's a good one. I'll read it. Um, talk about the... You know, she's... Why is this like... Wow, they're all bored with it. That's a whole... Yeah. Um... The president chairs. He's on vacation, so I'm worried. Um, I think he's saying... I don't know what's happening.
Sup, Gator?
All right. What's going on?
You stay in trouble?
I am.
I know you're not. You leave the Rex party.
I wasn't there. I mean, you were there when I left.
I probably left before you did. I just stayed there. I mean, I don't know, nine o'clock, something like that.
We, I think we were about to...
You fell, or you couldn't have time to get there, couldn't you? Wednesday night, tomorrow night, you going tomorrow night?
Wednesday night, well, one of the other.
No, uh... You know, tomorrow night is, uh, George stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll let you know, see how long you have to listen. Patrick City and his soldier operates on sort of... Again.
[snaps fingers]
We'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's city council meeting, especially H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Aikerson. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember, uh, Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Here.
Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's make an allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Speaker.
Yeah.
Uh, we have two proclamations this evening, and we're gonna start with, uh, the eighty-year founding of Core Construction, if you folks want to meet me up here in front. Rule number one: Turn the microphone on. Uh, this evening, it gives me great honor to, uh, present a proclamation to Core for their eighty years in business. Whereas the story of Core Construction began in nineteen thirty-seven, when Otto Baum, a German immigrant, applied for a loan to start a masonry company. While he had no collateral, he had his character and reputation, and that was enough. Relying on instinct, the loan officer granted the request based on a value that is woven through Core Construction's business today: trust. And whereas from the vision of one hard-working and resourceful man grew a bustling company that now has seventeen offices in eight states and employs over twelve hundred people. And whereas, even as the company has expanded throughout the nation, they still remember their roots and maintain offices in central Illinois. And whereas the employees of Core Construction believe in the power of philanthropy, and many of them donate their time and resources to volunteer organizations in the communities where they live. And whereas whether they're building a medical complex, a fire station, a senior living facility, or a performing arts center, they build communities, one structure at a time. And whereas the success of Core Construction can be directly tied to the employees not only have expertise in a vast array of fields, but who live the values of their company each day: integrity, fairness, continuous improvement, and results. These four values, the foundational elements of trust, speak to the legacy of founder Otto Baum. Now therefore I, Jamar Dis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize the founding of Core Construction eighty years ago in Peoria, Illinois. Well, I'd like to recognize, uh, Wayne Baum, who's, uh, the chairman of the board, uh, who will also, uh, recognize, uh, Tim and Christine, but, uh, the proclamation said a lot, uh, and it talked about, uh, the value of, of Core and our community, uh, the values that they instill, uh, in their employees, uh, and also how important, uh, Core Construction is to the communities that they do business in. But words can't really adequately express, uh, what the Baum family, uh, gives back. Uh, and anybody that's involved in any level of any organization throughout this community knows, uh, that, uh, a company that truly does, uh, put its money where its mouth is and, uh, give back to this community in so many ways, uh, as Wayne and his family and and his employees. So, uh, not only are we very proud that, uh, that they started here eighty years ago and that they're still here, but, uh, we're very proud of the example that they set, uh, to other businesses in this community, uh, for providing so much, uh, outside of, of just jobs. So, uh, Wayne, congratulations. Hope you say a few words for us.
Thanks, Jim. You're welcome. Thanks, Jim. Though it's truly been a privilege to work in the Peoria community. Um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's the right thing to do to give back because the community has given us so much as well. Otto Baum, my father, was a very hard-working German immigrant, came through Ellis Island and, uh, worked as a hired man on a farm for a couple of years. And as Jim said, went to the Morton Community Bank, bank president, the name of Fred Ruling, senior, and said, "Otto, what's your collateral?" He said, "Well, I have no collateral." He said, "But I've just gotten my hard work and my character." And they said, "Well, we'll have to take it to the board." Well, the board is made up of area farmers because it was an ag community, Morton, Illinois. And so, they said, Chairman Fred said, "You know, Otto wants this loan, but he doesn't have it." I think it was two hundred, hundred and eighty dollars, something like that. Buy a small two-wheel trailer, a mortar hoe, shovel, and a wheelbarrow. And, uh, he said he doesn't have any collateral. Uh, what do you think? So, there, he had worked for all the area farmers, doing some masonry work, barn foundation assistance, things such as that. And they said, "Well, Otto Baum has got strong character, good work ethic, he's honest and trustworthy." And they gave him the loan. And that loan of one hundred and eighty dollars on his character alone, uh, has now grown into almost a billion-dollar company. So, we have been truly blessed, uh, by this community and by so many communities throughout the country. And, um, this is a very meaningful and humbling, uh, experience to get this proclamation here in front of this city council in Peoria, Illinois. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to thank the city for, for honoring us here today, and I'm especially blessed to be part of the Baum family and be able to carry on the tradition here of eighty years and be part of the future. It, it's really something. Wayne and his brothers and his father have really set the standard for us, and we look forward to continuing to, to do work here and be part of the community, and we thank you all for everything you've done for us to get us started. Thank you very much.
Uh, next we have Peoria Reads. Roberta and Patricia. Whereas Commonplace and the Peoria Public Library, along with various community partners, have worked together since two thousand and one to annually present Peoria Reads, a One-City-One-Book initiative to promote community participation in reading. And whereas the Peoria Reads two thousand and eighteen project encourages Peorians to read at the same time the same significant book, Station Eleven by Emily St. John Mandel, in order to bring our diverse community together in ways to promote better understanding of ourselves and our own humanity. And whereas reading together will help encourage reading while increasing opportunities for discussion between people of all ages, broadening and deepening readers' appreciation for books dealing with significant issues. Now therefore I, Jamar Dis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim spring two thousand and eighteen as Peoria Read season and encourage all people to read Station Eleven and attend the programs, book discussions, and movies at all Peoria Public Library locations in Peoria, Illinois. Uh, Roberta and Patricia are here from the Peoria Public Library and Commonplace, and they're gonna offer us a few more words.
On behalf of Commonplace, thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Patricia Moulton, and I am the, uh, Adult Literacy Director for Commonplace. Um, with our focus on literacy, Commonplace was delighted to have initiated, um, the Peoria Reads in two thousand and one. For the past sixteen years, we have been a proud partner of the Peoria Public Library with others in the community to encourage one book, one read concept throughout the city. So, thank you.
I'm Roberta Kuselski. I'm Deputy Director of Peoria Public Library, and I've been co-chair of the Peoria Reads Project since it started. We began our community read in two thousand and one. Our first book was in two thousand and two. We read and discussed A Lesson Before Dying by Ernest J. Gaines. Through the years, we've read about, we've read fiction and nonfiction, depending on the choice of the committee, but we always select a book that we hope will engage Peoria readers in talking about significant issues. As the proclamation stated, this year we're reading Station Eleven by Emily St. John Mandel. And, uh, it's a story about a flu pandemic that wipes out ninety-nine percent of the earth's population. From that, you might not want to read it, especially with what's going on with the flu recently. But it's actually, um, the survivors live in a world of hope, of people coping with nostalgia and loss, both in the present and the future. And it's about the power of art and relationships to fulfill us, sustain us, and nurture us back to our best selves. There's a lot to talk about in this novel. Just a few of the events we're having. During the month of February, Peoria Public Library, in our main library gallery, is creating a museum of civilization. In the book, some of the survivors live in an abandoned airport, and a man who kind of thinks of himself as a librarian begins collecting things, as librarians do. And so, the, somebody turns in a credit card that's no longer of use in, uh, the post-apocalyptic world, and a woman turns in her pair of stilettos. And, uh, so we're creating a museum of civilization at the library with such old obsolete technology as my old eight-track cartridge player and, uh, old farm equipment and old library equipment. And we're even gonna have a little bit of quiz on some of the maybe less recognizable objects that you can put your guesses on what these were used for. An exciting event is with our new partner this year, Methodist College. They're going to offer a tour of their simulation center and put us through what it would be like if, uh, pandemic came through and, uh, how they would react to it and how the pandemic, the, the contagion would spread through the, uh, through the premises and how they would contain it. That's going to be a, a reservation only because it's just for a limited amount of people. We'll have publicity out on that soon. And then, the, uh, last thing for kids, we're getting kids involved. The American Red Cross is doing a pillowcase project, fire and tornado preparedness, um, sessions at three of our locations. So, we try to include people of all ages in this topic, and we hope everyone will read the book and get involved. For more information on the full list of events, you can go to peoriareads.org. Thank you.
Councilman Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes to joint city council and town board meeting held on January nine, two thousand and eighteen, as printed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first two items are for the township. 18-011 is a communication from the town with a request to approve monthly anticipated expenditures for February 2018 for the Town of the City of Peoria.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Trustee Ruck Regal. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
18-012 is a Town of the City of Peoria financial report for the period ending 12/31/2017 with a request to receive and file.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
I move for approval.
Thank you. Seconded by Trustee Seer. Is there discussion on this item? Trustee Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I had a question. I see Township Supervisor Abner out in the audience. Could I ask him to come up so I could ask him? Unless there's someone else here from, maybe Mr. Nick Tink can answer it. I just had a question about the expenditures. I know that some of the assistance currently that you, that you're using for bus transportation, I saw that in the budget. And I'm just wondering with, you know, what's going on with the closing of the two Kroger stores, if there's an ability for you to shift some more assistance to bus transportation, if it's needed, to help transport people to other grocery stores from the south side and the east block?
Right. Most of the bus vouchers or the bus passes that we're using are for our general assistance clients, so that is not an issue with them. For the non-general assistance, that would fall under the emergency part of the township. We are looking at that right now. We're kind of waiting to see how everything plays out with transportation. But that is something we've had discussions about with some of the agencies in town that we work with. But there are, there is, that is available if we feel there's a need. We're just trying to figure out where we're at, because we're coming towards the end of this budget, too. But yeah, that is something that's possible.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I hope you'll keep us posted on that. And just, we'll keep that in mind as we try to help all the citizens that are affected by this.
Yes, as long as they live in the township, not the city, but we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion. In a second, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at the consent agenda. 18-013 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve the First Amendment to Master Professional Services Agreement 16-119 with Millennial Professional Services of Illinois for a not-to-exceed amount of $350,000, extension for construction, engineering, and other various services in 2018. 18-014 is a request for the city manager to execute an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in an amount not to exceed $36,041 for the city's participation in sidewalk traffic signal and resurfacing cost associated with the improvement of Knoxville Avenue from Pennsylvania Avenue to Corrington Avenue. 18-015 is a request to approve the First Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement 16-119A with TARA Engineering for a not-to-exceed amount of $350,000, extension for design, engineering, and other various services in 2018. 18-016 is a request to adopt an ordinance supplementing the City of Peoria sexual harassment policy. 18-009 is a request to approve an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code of the City of Peoria relating to the Warehouse Form District. And 18-017 is a report from the city treasurer, Patrick Nickteen, for the month of December 2017 with a request to receive and file, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Items to remove from consent this evening, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Items 18-013, 18-014, and 18-015, please. Thank you.
13, 14, 15. Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo. Okay. Any other items to remove from consent this evening? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Grab, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
18-013 is the First Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Millennial Professional Services.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for all three of these items will be, in essence, the same. And that is, we've spent, it looks like, $2 million has been awarded in the past for all three of these projects. And we're looking for an additional amount to be contracted, contract extension. So, my question that is going to exist for all three is, for the $2 million that was spent for this particular item, 13, what was the minority participation for this project, for that $2 million? And how is that going to be carried through to the additional amounts that are being requested? I see this was from a contract that was in 2016. I would imagine for some of these companies, we did some similar items for 2017, maybe even looking at it for some similar work for 2018. This is going to always be my question when these things come before us. And so, if you could have something prepared that lists what the minority participation was, and something other than, whoa, it was a good faith effort to find someone and they couldn't, no, no. So, it would extend to employees, contractors, and consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we don't have the breakdown tonight, but I can get that for what the minority participation was on the workforce utilization. On the ours, that's just something we haven't tracked in the past for professional services contracts versus contracted services, like contractors. So, we can get that information over the last three years. But I would show that, or say that Millennial Professional Service is a registered minority business enterprise by the state of Illinois.
I knew that to be the case, but it doesn't mean that just because the guy, the CEO, sitting behind a desk, writing the checks and everything, is a minority, doesn't mean that down the line, there are additional people that he's using or she's using. I'm not sure if it's a male or female. And so, I think we should stop, not necessarily lean on the fact that that's a minority company. If he's the only minority in the company, it really doesn't serve the purpose as far as I'm concerned. But I do not want to hold these up, and I will move for approval on each one as they come up. But I just want to have that information and sort of notice that from this point forward. I think Councilman Grab suggested that sometime last year, but I just wanted to remind us, since we're in a new year, a lot of things have happened, just to bring that back to your memory. Thank you. I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Further discussion on this? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question for Director. Certainly, you must feel that these are credible companies that you're working with. And is there some kind of rating that you could give back to us, just to show us that they are, you know, a good company? Some kind of, yeah, I guess, a rating on how well they're doing on the past projects that they've worked on?
Yes, we can, we have the, we go through a matrix to select professional services. And we did this back in 2016 for those, but we'd be happy to put that back in an issues update.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Councilwoman Moore?
Real quick, when you talked about that matrix, to the councilman's point, if we're always using the same people and not going outside, those same three to five, maybe, I don't know what number there is, perhaps there's something that needs to be tweaked about that matrix so we can bring in others. We will be discussing that more as we go throughout the year, because I, too, would like to see other, there are other engineering firms, I'm sure, that may be minority-owned. I don't know. Maybe there aren't. But you're a professional. I'll leave that to you to reach out and find those individuals so that we can have more than just the same. What people say are the people with the inside track, you know, those on the outside track might be wonderful and qualified as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
18-014 is the agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for the Knoxville Avenue project.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded Councilman Regenbach. Discussion on this item? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
And 18-015 is the First Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with TARA Engineering.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded Councilman Grab. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at the first reading. 18-018 is a request for a first reading review of an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to massage establishments.
Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Perhaps we could have our Acting Corporation Council provide us with a bit of an overview as to how we've gotten, thankfully, to this point tonight.
Thank you. Until 2005, the City of Peoria's code actually regulated massage establishments. In 2005, the state of Illinois began individually licensing massage therapists. And so, at that time, the council vacated the ordinance they had. In the last three years, you've seen numerous communities, including Chicago, but smaller communities, including Lombard, Champaign, Orland Park, adopt ordinances that now will provide a business license for massage establishments to hopefully assist in combating the issue of human trafficking. There have been multiple community groups that have reached out to not only the council but to the legal department, asking us to take a look at this. So, what you have before you is what we believe to be the best practices for this ordinance. I will say, we are certainly open to any comments and questions and are happy to incorporate and look at this further. For example, today, after this was provided to some other attorneys that represent various massage establishments, one raised a question about how we will handle a sole proprietorship, and perhaps if there will be an exemption for that. The ordinance as drafted does not provide an exemption for that currently. So, those are the kinds of comments we welcome, and we encourage you to provide to us so that we can help you draft the best ordinance.
Well, I certainly appreciate that overview, and I think it's very clear that no one means to disparage all such businesses in the City of Peoria, or in our state, or in our country. However, I do believe that there is a place for the city to be involved in regulation, and I think we're going back to where we should have been all along. Manager, do you have a feel for whether we should go ahead and approve this tonight? This is, of course, a first reading, so our Corporation Council has some idea as to what we may want to cover as relates to the sole proprietorship. But input from both of you would be welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. I think that with this, we would bring it back. If we do add some of the provisions for sole proprietorship, we would bring it back, and it would come to you on the regular agenda versus just simply coming on the consent, so that there could be further discussion from the council on February 13.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, I guess, Acting Corporation Council, Peterson, for bringing this to us and putting it together. I'm glad to see the city's focused on this issue, because it's been a big issue in the community for the last couple of months. And so, I'm very happy to see this come to us so quickly. One question I have, as I went through it, could you just, for the public, kind of give a brief summary of how these establishments will be regulated under this?
It's multifaceted. The application is initially submitted to the city manager's office. From there, it is distributed to both the code enforcement or community development and the fire department. There are provisions in this ordinance that would require the businesses that are open, the storefronts, to comply with all health and safety codes. So, there is an inspection system anticipated.
I guess, more specifically, is can you explain what it, how it will help in our efforts to stop human trafficking or keep it from happening? What particular things are prohibited?
One area of importance in this particular ordinance includes a prohibition that anyone under the age of 18, unless they are actually licensed by the state of Illinois, is allowed to work in that facility. Numerous reports and various studies have shown that a lot of the human trafficking that has occurred has been in individuals that are underage. So, prohibiting their ability to work in these facilities, other communities have found to be a very useful tactic.
And then, will it primarily be used on a complaint-driven basis, or would the city be doing regular inspections?
Because it is a business license, I think there will be a bit of a learning curve at first to figure out if we can go out and figure out all the licenses that should be issued. We anticipate a 90-day period where we would be doing some community outreach to make sure that all the appropriate therapists who are operating establishments need to be licensed, that we can work with that group. We're also hoping to find if there's perhaps a local association that we can distribute that information through, so that they realize they have 90 days in order to come in and comply. After that initial period, I would expect it to be complaint-driven for us to check to see if someone has actually registered and gotten the license from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I am very pleased to see this coming forward. I think we've all had concerns about the proliferation of these establishments and our inability to really have any regulation over them. So, I think this is a great step. My one question, though, counsel, would be, what would be the point of a sole proprietor being exempt? I mean, we, wouldn't, we want to have the same expectations, or is it just because of the fee? Or help me understand where that was coming from.
A sole proprietor that is going into somebody's home, or that is hosting individuals in their own house, although they may have to comply with home occupancy regulations, that may be an exception that the council would want to provide. If the council has no intent to provide an exception for a sole proprietorship that still has a brick-and-mortar store, we can leave the ordinance as it stands.
And even the sole proprietor would need to be licensed under the current state law, though, so?
Through the state of Illinois, correct.
It would just be this particular additional purview that they would, they're seeking the variance from, I guess. Is that right?
The intent when drafting was really to a deal with storefronts and brick-and-mortar stores.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of goes to our city manager. Do we have a number of businesses, a count for how many businesses there are operating in our community? I don't have a, an exact count offhand. We can certainly get that for you as we proceed with this and have that for you on the 13th. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Agerson?
Thank you. That was a question that I was going to ask, so I'd like to ask a follow-up. How exactly will you determine how many businesses there are, Mr. City Manager?
Well, I think that first and foremost, we'll go through and look at the number of establishments that have physical locations. That's the part, and then we'll cross-reference that with the information from the state with regards to the licensed massage therapists and where they're operating. with regards to the licensed massage therapists and where they're operating to come up with the number of locations, the physical locations that we have in the city. This ordinance, as it was designed, was, was designed to, to regulate the establishments. So that's why we're going to look at that first.
If I may, so, but it still hasn't answered my question. We don't have currently a listing of any businesses in the City of Peoria. So for instance, if I wanted to send a note out to all the car washes in town, you know, I know of a couple of car washes, but I'm not certain I know where they all are. If I wanted to send a note out to all of the tanning salons in the city, you know, that would be quite a task for me. So I know that this has been brought up before and I know that the Chamber of Commerce has pushed back on it, but I really do think that we need to explore the listing, the registration of all businesses. And I know that there was concern that it would be too expensive and be one more way for us to push business out. So I would say, let's not charge anything for it. Let's just have them, every business in the city needs to register and for those that don't, there would be a penalty. Anyway, because I don't think we really have a way to figure out how many massage parlors there are, is what I'm getting at, Mr. City Manager, and I just would appreciate you saying, yes, you're right.
Well, it would be infinitely easier if we had business licenses in place. We will find a way to get the number of establishments, but we don't have a license and we don't, right now, in place that would allow us to do that easily.
Okay, so in a city that is struggling financially, that we need to find ways to be efficient and effective, I am just kind of stunned as to why this hasn't been already established. You know, I, I just don't see this, I don't know how we're going to get this worked out. You know, are we going to send staff out in there, in our city cars, going from strip mall to strip mall? And then, how are we going to do it? What are the logistics of it all? I want this ordinance to be, to become real. I think it's really important. I think that sex trafficking in the City of Peoria probably is more, there's, there is probably more of it than we understand and know. So whatever we can do to start, you know, chipping away at it, I appreciate. So, but I, I do think that the council needs to understand the logistics of all this and, and I don't think we should be discriminating against any business. I think all businesses need to let us know they're in business, where they are, just for their benefit. So perhaps we could bring this up at the next city council meeting, some sort of, or maybe in a month. In a month, come up with a way where we could start to understand more about the benefits of having business registration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't remember exactly where we left that discussion when we, when we did have it during the budget. I know there were a number of questions about the logistics and the, the chamber expressed some concern about it. There was some, some feedback from council about if, if a business is already registered in another area, we're not trying to hit them twice. But, so, Mr. Manager, I think it's appropriate because we were going to do some more work on this and bring it back for discussion. So we may just want to bring it back for a, not for, as an action item in a month, but to start developing what we need to do to get that, that registration process because I, I agree with Councilwoman Akison, that's something we need to do. Thank you. Councilman Grab and then Seer.
Yes, Manager and Council, this, what we're doing here tonight is going to help us get a handle on such issues as number of businesses that we have operating in the City of Peoria. This doesn't get the City of Peoria in the business of licensing massage therapists. That's still going to be largely a state function. But there is a database that Springfield has on who is licensed. And I think this will help us determine who's operating beneath the radar screen as well as we work through this. So I think Councilmember Akison has really struck a nerve. This is one of the reasons, you know, we were asking the administration to do this so we can get a better handle on this business, which has really expanded. It's like topsy over the past five or six years and you don't have to drive down too many streets without seeing more and more of these. And, you know, I do believe government works best in most cases when it's brought close to the people. The people in Springfield don't know what's happening on Main Street in Peoria or whatever street it might be as, they don't know it as well as what we know. So I think this is really a step in the right direction. I appreciate all the work that legal staff has done and the council has done to bring this forward with the first reading. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure the chief was not, didn't come prepared to say a few, or make a few comments about this item tonight, but since I have a couple of young ladies living in my house, I'd be interested to, without scaring the population here, maybe you can give us a brief, brief update on how big of a problem it is right now and, you know, without scaring people?
It is, it is a concern. It's always a concern of ours. We're talking about this type of topic. We get, we get complaints from time to time regarding this type of establishment and, and I think that anything that we can put in place to, to help regulate that is going to help everybody in this community.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was talking to, anyway. In reference to the comments about registering businesses during the budget cycle, I think the, the main pushback from many of the folks in the community was that we were going to put a fee on it. And some folks talked about being registered in other places. That night, and I didn't mention it, but that night I had received a, a text from a business owner here that does a lot of business with, with the city, who indicated different communities, other cities that he does business in, and each one of those other cities, he has to register and he had to pay a fee. So I'm not trying to revisit the fee upfront. Perhaps online, there could be a registration process whereby a person just registers online at no cost and you give them 30, 60, 90, 160, 180 days, whatever it is, to register. And if they don't do it within that six-month timeframe, let's say, then there's some fee or fine for not registering, but they would given, they would be given the opportunity to register for free. Because we're not trying to make money from this process, we're just trying to figure out where these folks are. And sometimes it takes a little while for people to find out about it. And so as you're writing up your information to bring back to us, perhaps that might be something you can incorporate into the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's no further discussion on the item, on the first reading, I would accept a motion to receive and file. Councilman Grab, seconded, Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at the regular business items. Eighteen dash zero zero eight is a communication from the city manager and community development director with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the Code of the City of Peoria related to the registration of lots. And on yellow paper on your desk is a replacement ordinance and a communication.
Director Black, did you maybe want to give us an update on the yellow sheet?
Thank you, Mayor. This item, as you will recall, came before you two weeks ago as a first reading. Lots of positive comments and requests for changes and some conversations that have occurred over the last two weeks have resulted in, I think, a clearer ordinance that specifically exempts from registration certain classes of residential property. On the memo before you, the item that was added after the agenda went out was an exemption from registration for residential properties that are temporarily vacant for less than six continuous months. That item was entered simply to cover situations where someone was perhaps convalescing in a nursing home or in a hospital or on vacation and therefore the property was vacant and therefore there might be some question as to whether it would be registered or not. This clearly allows for those properties that are temporarily vacant to, to be exempt. So with that addition, the ordinance is before you that I hope meets all of the requirements that were set out two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, thank you, Director Black, for working on this so quickly. I know, as I mentioned at our last meeting when we reviewed the first draft, this was an issue that we brought along with the Peoria Area Realtors Association and Councilman Euler and myself brought to your attention just, I think, in November or December. So I appreciate the quick work on this and I thank you for making the revisions that have changed, that have corrected some of the issues that we brought up and to your attention in the last meeting. So I will be supporting this and it's good work. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only because I'm a 20-year insurance professional, I just wanted to, so those insurance professionals out there, understand that an occup, owner occupied residence, where the occupant is gone for six months because they went to somewhere else, that property is not vacant, it is simply unoccupied. It is still owner, it is still owner, owned by an owner and occupied by an owner, they're just simply on vacation. And so I think we split a little here that we spent more time than we needed to because that property is not vacant. That's only the clarification I wanted to provide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, the typical council protocol, if someone wants to ask for the privilege of a floor is to have a council member do that for them, that we have a citizens-to-address portion of the meeting where people can address us. So I'm pretty sure that the person didn't know that that was the process. And I do have a request for Ryan Cannon to, to speak on this issue. So if there's no objection from the council, Mr. Cannon, if you'd like to address the council, you're welcome to.
I apologize, I did not know that. My name's Ryan Cannon, I'm at, live at 312 West Maywood in Peoria. Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to provide brief remarks on Agenda Item 18008, amending Chapter Five of the City Code related to the registration of lots. Several months ago, the Peoria Area Association of Realtors reached out to city staff and several members of city council for assistance based on calls from many of our clients that they were being ticketed by the city because the city considered their for-sale properties to be non-owner occupied. The homeowners had moved out of the home due to job relocation and had not been successful in selling the property. Since the homeowners were not physically living in the home, the city was issuing fines stating that their properties were non-owner occupied and therefore in violation of the current registration of lots language within the city code. We sought a remedy for these property owners since we felt that issuing citations and fines to homeowners whose properties were being actively marketed for sale and were not being advertised for rent was a much too restrictive and severe interpretation of the current requirements for registering vacant property. PAR members met several times with staff, Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Euler, and we felt we had drafted, agreed on, drafted and agreed on equitable language to recommend to council addressing vacant properties listed for sale and not being advertised for rent. We were not asking that all vacant properties be exempt from registration. We too are concerned about vacant property and we do support the accountability of a registration process. We appreciate the work done by staff and members of the council and we believe the language presented to you this evening is a good solution to the problem. Again, our thanks to staff and council.
Thank you very much. If there's, there is, Councilwoman Jensen?
I just wasn't sure if, if there's not a motion. I don't think anyone made a motion to approve.
That I was just going to ask you for.
I, I so moved.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Eighteen dash zero one nine is a communication from the city manager with a request for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance that amends the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone Designating Ordinance to delete parcels from the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone Amendment Number Five. And B is to approve an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone. If we could have separate motions and votes, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I'd like to allow Director Black to speak to this issue before a move for approval if there's any comments that's necessary.
Okay. Director Black?
Council, city manager?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I, these, the next two items, this, this first item, which actually removes parcels from the urban enterprise zone, and then the, the next item, which adds the parcels into the River Edge Redevelopment Zone, are designed for, first for the Caterpillar project, but also for some other properties that we have that would be eligible to avail themselves, or excuse me, or the OSF project, that would avail themselves of the historic tax credits. And so this will provide that opportunity and I'd like to, to thank Leslie McKnight, Dr. McKnight, who has worked on this project for us. There's, as you can see, there's, there's a lot of legal descriptions with this. It's a long lead time that we have that we're working on with the state to, to pull these parcels out and to put them in. And Representative Spain has just walked in, who works for OSF on this project as well, and we want to thank him for his efforts as well.
Councilwoman Moore?
I'd like to move for approval of item 18019A.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously and Councilwoman Moore on item B.
Move for approval?
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Eighteen dash oh twenty is a request to adopt an ordinance, amending Ordinance Number 17016 to add parcels to the River Edge Redevelopment Zone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Regenbach. Discussion on this item. Councilman Grab?
Chairman, since our state senator is here, former member of the Peoria City Council, maybe he would like to comment a little bit to this item?
Mr. Representative?
That would be you, Ryan Spain. We'll give you time to take your coat off if you want to.
Good evening, Ryan Spain, 100 West Raven Woods, Peoria. Councilman, thank you, Mayor. It's good to see you all. I would just say, I'm simply here to answer any questions if you have any, but I couldn't pass up the opportunity to compliment this council for your work on creating important economic development tools. These are tools that emphasize the rehabilitation of some of our most important historic buildings in the City of Peoria. And I think without some of the tools developed by this council, many of those buildings would not have the opportunity that may be currently in front of them. So the Rivers Edge Redevelopment Zone continues to be a very powerful tool. It's available to only a handful of communities in Illinois and I know that Peoria is taking a very special advantage to make sure that it's a program that's very strong and well utilized in our community.
Representative Spain, and thank you for correcting me on that. This means a lot to, to many Peorians. And there is another element here that I think is very significant and that is the use of the state historic tax credits to really make this building shine once again and look like it did years ago. Such an iconic building when it was a department store. And we really appreciate what OSF is doing to this building and use- And we really appreciate what OSF is doing to this building and using these historic tax credits and we're happy to partner with you and I know the city is happy to partner with you as well. We're glad to see Caterpillar helping to make this happen and I'm glad you came down to the council tonight.
Thank you. Councilman, any questions for the representative as he's here? Councilman Moore.
Now that Councilmember Grab has stolen all of my thunder, thank you. I do want to thank Representative Spain for all that you've done to assist in this project. I understand that you are a big part of making sure that this was led in the right direction, direction of this happening. Many of you may know or may not know that Representative Spain was a very huge partner to the First District when he was on this council. And I'm happy to report that has not ended. He has taken that representation on to the state and I do appreciate it. Thank you for encouraging OSF to make the wonderful decision that they made. It's going to be a huge lift to the First District and the downtown. I've already had various contractors calling me asking how to get ahold of you and so if you start getting strained phone calls, it's because I've given them your work number. So I do appreciate that. Just remember minority participation will be requested and expected. That is what OSF did in the past and I expect they will probably do the same. So thank you from the First District for all that you've done before and now and in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And yes, that will certainly be a tremendous effort as part of this project to make sure that the community is well represented in what should be a very important community project. And certainly while all of us in elected public office enjoy these type of very kind words, I would just be remiss if I didn't recognize those that are truly responsible for what OSF is doing in this community. The leadership of OSF, which is our CEO, Bob Serian, and then our sisters. And they have been very committed to doing what's right for this community and helping to deliver something that can be really a transformational opportunity for all of Peoria. And I know we all look forward to opportunities to work together to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion, the second, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
18021 is a communication from the city manager and chief innovation officer with a request to receive and file a presentation of the work to date and 2018 work plan for the city of Peoria's innovation team.
Thank you. Mr. Corso.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I would just like to take a few minutes. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to, give me the opportunity to speak tonight on the work to date and where we're headed with this. Just want to take a few minutes of your time. Many of you have had conversations with the team and myself with right through regular updates and what we'd like to do tonight is kind of give a survey and overview of what we've been up to most recently and certainly our plans for 2018 and then address any questions you might have. So we'll try to keep it at a relatively high level here. Okay, just very quickly, I do, because it is a broader audience, want to spend just a minute here at the beginning to give a quick overview of the innovation team, the model that we work under and our charter within city government here. Also, updates in the two priority areas, as you all know. City leadership defines a priority area for the innovation team to work in and we are working both still in the first priority that was identified, which is to leverage this major investment the city will be making in solving the CSO and making sure we get as many community benefits as possible out of that. Second priority being, and building off of that, is how do we look at what the city can do and what partnerships we can build to better support neighborhood-scale economic development? So I can talk a little bit more about what that means here in a minute. And as I mentioned, just what we're up to, so the workflow we had in 2017, how we've been working on these various issues and capacity building within City Hall and partnership building, but also our work plan moving forward. So I don't expect you to read any of the, this is just a diagram, the model that we have. We have the great opportunity through initially a grant through Bloomberg Philanthropies to be part of a network of now over 27 communities, mostly in North America, that work under this model where they're embedded, we're embedded as kind of a think tank or in-house consultancy for the city. Where we're really trying to take some of these large challenges, figure out how we can start solving them and improve residents' lives and outcomes for taxpayers. Won't go get into all of these, but just give a couple examples, what we're doing on the ground here. We really work at taking things a little bit further in terms of deeply understanding the challenges that are part of these priority areas. So trying to understand root causes and exploring best practices. Many communities, and we learn this through our network, are dealing with very similar, if not identical, challenges on the ground. So it's in our best interest to learn from what they're learning and learn from their mistakes and try to take that knowledge and leapfrog, if you will. So exploring best practices, we have some small images, those of you who have handouts can see these a little better, but the first image we have up there is actually one of our earliest peer exchanges where we took leadership from the city to Philadelphia to understand how they were solving their CSO with green infrastructure and building a network of benefits for the community around that. Another example here around engaging many, the work we've been doing over a little more than a year now in neighborhood-scale economic development has culminated in this effort that's going on right now called Help Shape West Main. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute too. But as we all know, with limited resources, it's more critical now than ever, especially in taking on very complex challenges, to build partnerships with institutions, with residents, with others, so that we can work together to solve these problems. So ultimately, our goal is to help build and support innovation capacity within the city of Peoria, within City Hall, because we need that, as you know, more than ever moving forward with the challenges that we're facing. So very quickly, I'll give an update on CSO-related initiatives that came out. So we began, one of the first initiatives that we rolled out was really a community-building effort to get knowledge about what the city was looking at, understanding issues, but it was about getting people together. We piloted this project back in 2016, ran May to August. When crime is at its peak and the weather is generally good for people getting out and being active. And so it was based on physical activity, getting people to walk together, building community, creating essentially neighborhood stewards. And out of that, we measured the impact when people started doing this and implications on crime within the community and things like that. And so where this was successful, where we saw people getting out and walking, we saw a lot more community connections. We still see there are groups today that were part of this Walk the Block campaign that are still walking groups today and regularly check in with us to let them know. And they have made a difference in their community just being the stewards for the community. So this was tying this back to our idea, our solution for redesigning or retrofitting our streetscapes within the older third of the city to basically pull water out of the system but also create more benefits for the community. So secondly, is that just that, the pilot, this Complete Streets pilot project that launched in October, was completed in October and celebrated then with a non-traditional ribbon cutting. Many of you attended. The idea there, again, to showcase both for the EPA and other constituents but for our residents, what we could do with the strategy, this innovative strategy that the city has proposed to solve this problem. Peoria Core launching just in October of last year. Many of you are familiar with us and have had conversations around it. Weaving this whole solution to the CSO together, taking folks, as of 2015, we had approximately 3,700 so-called opportunity youth within the combined sewer area. And those are folks that are 16 to 24 years old that have been out of school and out of work for at least six months. And so this is a human resource and it's an opportunity. And so we created this program with partners to try to develop a career pathway where they would do national service maintaining green infrastructure projects. And so we could actually start to build a pipeline with residents of the community for those that could design, construct, operate and maintain the infrastructure that we're building. And then finally, a more recent project, also a groundbreaking this fall that many of you attended, was a way to explore, again, a solution to CSO, so dealing with stormwater issues but partnering with organizations and cross-sector or public-private partnerships, testing models around that so that we could actually reduce overall costs to taxpayers by getting, you know, wrapping in multiple benefits. So this is a stormwater farm idea where you are, you know, pulling water out of the combined sewer system but you are implementing an urban agriculture and job training program in the process. So you're building more stakeholders, you're building more buy-in from the community, you're solving, you're trying to solve multiple problems with one solution. And so I will jump ahead in the interest of time. One of the things that I definitely want to highlight is we're very excited about the work that we're doing. We're always very busy with this, but we're always looking at opportunities to leverage resources. And so as an innovation team, jumping at opportunities to pursue grants, sometimes alone, sometimes with partners, to move some of these great ideas forward, many of which were initiated with the community and with staff. So just with the Priority One work over the last year and a half, two years, we've been able to pull in over a million and a half dollars in grant funding to support these programs. So the first one up there is the USDA grant, that's funding the stormwater farm. Thank you. The second two grants, the CNCS and the DCO, were used to launch the Peoria Core program. Sorry, I didn't realize I was so far away from the microphone. Very quickly, Priority Two, again, neighborhood-scale economic development. We really started late in 2016 after coming to council and having a discussion about where we should put our effort for the next priority. And beginning in 2017, really moved forward with kind of even a deeper dive than we were doing before in terms of community outreach and we call this the human-centered design approach. So I'll talk just a minute, just a little bit more about that in a minute because it is impacting the way that we interact with the community. And then talk briefly about a few of the high-level insights that we pulled out of that work over the last year and then into kind of our work plan for 2018 and how we're taking a two-tiered approach for both kind of short-term, testing ideas in the short-term within a corridor, the Help Shape West Main campaign as an example, and then longer-term initiatives that may include larger partnerships, more community investment capacity and longer timelines. So just very briefly, human-centered design, most of you are familiar from meetings with the innovation team, our kind of traditional four-step process here that we've talked about before. This little circle and the arrow on the bottom is what we've done starting in 2017, which is to take a deep dive and actually do ethnographic research, going out and interviewing. So instead of hitting hundreds of residents to get data, diving deeper by doing, you know, interviews and observations and documenting, actually creating data sets of qualitative data from our neighborhoods that we lacked before. And it's not because we can't just take best practices that fit us very well, but there are very unique attributes to neighborhoods or to communities or to Peoria that we want to make sure that when we roll out an idea that we're addressing and making that initiative, that project, that policy as effective as it can be based on what we've learned. So I'm just going to skip through a couple of these. So these shouldn't be unfamiliar to you guys. I think we've had a lot of these conversations, but just to talk about three of the high-level insights. The community, and we heard this over and over, like needing a shared vision with goals that can be broken down into accessible and incremental steps. So we've had a lot of great interactions, a lot of great visions for commercial corridors for neighborhoods. And in many cases, a lot of great things came out of those and a lot of great energy. But when we didn't have the $10, $20, $30 million to implement that full vision, it veered off course because people didn't, you know, know how to move forward, institutions alone, residents alone, neighborhood associations, didn't know how to move forward in the absence of all that funding. So one of the things that came to the fore and is we're seeing among our peer cities is how do you find those incremental steps that you can take to really move in advance, move the needle on some of these issues? Secondly, as you know, resources are always a challenge. We have complex issues that we're dealing with. So even if we don't have all of the resources to take on a challenge that we desperately need to be a partner in addressing, we do have the power to convene key stakeholders so that we can bring, you know, build those partnerships together to move some of these ideas forward and start solving the problems. And then the last one that I'll mention tonight is that perception, over and over again in all of our work through CSO and neighborhood-scale economic development, perception of the urban core, the center of the region is a stumbling block for us, a significant challenge because the data may show one thing, but people's perceptions of neighborhoods, of areas, of potential of place and a potential of people is kind of belied by that. And perception becomes reality. So that's something that we're thinking a lot about. We've had conversations with many of you about how do we help change the perception and change the reality? And sometimes that's through these quick wins, these incremental steps and trying to showcase what can happen and what can be successful to bring people along and build that coalition. I feel like I'm going pretty long here. I'm not going to get into all these. In 2017, we had a great year of building capacity, taking ideas that floated up, policies that councils already adopted like Complete Streets, and trying to figure out how to bring best practices in administering and implementing those in. So working with partners, working with the city manager, working with Public Works and Community Development and others. We certainly don't do this alone. We have these internal and external partners, but we try to play a key role in making sure that we have, build that technical capacity but also get beyond that. So I'll highlight, again, adaptive leadership, that's something that we brought to council last fall. Great example of dealing with wicked or complex or adaptive challenges that we don't alone as city staff and elected officials have purview over or can handle or tackle alone where we need to build partnerships. So that was really about tools and strategies for working across traditional silos, working across sectors. And so it's a great tool and we are actually, you know, working to make the culture more collaborative. And so we've started to implement some of those things this year and we'll talk about that briefly too. You don't have to read these. These are three lines just to show kind of our workflow over the last year. The top line in yellow or orange is the CSO work. We've had a few activities ramping up over the year. The blue line is that neighborhood-scale economic development work, which as you see, and I think is important to note here, is really ramping up with our community engagement work and developing ideas into initiatives. And then that third line on there that is kind of a brown or a darker red, that's our capacity building. That's where we're looking at things like smart cities or bringing in interns or looking at open data and performance management, ways we can enhance our ability to do that. So trying to build again the things that are really critical for being successful and implementing some of these solutions that we're proposing. So I just wanted to share that as a workflow. And again, this plan, this work plan in front of you, just want to highlight a couple things. One, we're really busy early this year going into and launching several collaborations with U of I, with Bradley, with partners in the community, both departments in the city and institutions outside. But the highlights here are really that we are taking neighborhood-scale economic development work, kind of finishing up our, if you will, it never ends, but idea generation, going into, starting last night actually, with a public meeting, testing some of these ideas on the ground. It might be, you know, testing an idea for how to improve storefronts within a given community or testing ideas for how the city can help small businesses find resources and navigate. But we're taking some of those ideas, working with the community to build capacity on the ground and, you know, essentially prototyping those, to use jargon, but testing these ideas, mocking these things up. And our goal is, we've got touchpoints with council on here, so is to come back with these ideas that we've tested, pitch some ideas for pilots that we'd run over the summer and when we come back to council in the fall, have recommendations for programs, new programs, tweaks to old programs, policy changes or new policies that could support the economic development that really drives the quality of place within the urban core of the city. And so with that, I'll just touch on a couple of these. We have, we're working on data science fellowship. We have a small development workshop that we're looking at launching in April to kind of weave some of these opportunities together. And then a big one that I'll just highlight to close, because I've probably been talking too long here, is this idea of really looking at cross-sector and public-private partnership opportunities. So through the work we've done to date, we've been invited by some foundations and others to participate in a few either grant applications or in the case of Connect Capital, an effort or in the case of Connect Capital, an effort to build capacity and bring anchor institutions and others together to build the infrastructure for community investment within the Peoria area. So it's a regional approach. And with that, I'll stop and see if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our chief innovation officer? Councilmember Grab?
Yes. Officer Corso, appreciate your presentation. I heard very good things about the presentation that occurred last night. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend that meeting. We have a problem in education even today, a field that I spent several decades in, and that is we speak in a manner in which the public cannot understand us. We use a lot of jargon and lingo and pedagogical terms and everything. What you're talking about is so important. I mean, it's absolutely dynamite. It's probably one of the best crime control programs you can have, one of the best things we can do to make our community more prosperous, make people enjoy their neighborhoods more. I think you need to keep in mind that we're not as smart as you are. And when you come, you need to do what Lyndon Johnson told some of his people to do is to write something down on eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper and make it kind of like so that we can understand it and the people at home can really understand it. Because I know you understand it, but some of the terms that you're using just leave us like we, this is important, but we don't know exactly what it means. So I guess that's my challenge for you because I think this Bloomberg initiative is terrific. And I said before in the past, I think your position needs to be made permanent. Peoria needs to continue to be on the cutting edge in so many different areas. So people want to study what we're doing in Peoria. So at least for me, maybe you could give two versions. One like this for the professionals who have taken all the classes you've taken, and another that's like for a layman like me who doesn't understand everything as well as I should. But it's really important what you're talking about. For example, tactical urbanism. You know, I think that's a very important concept, and I'm not certain that the listeners at home know what that means. And, you know, I look forward to more exercises that you can do in certainly my district and the rest of the city to help make this become very important in the minds of our citizens. They understand what this can mean for their neighborhoods. Can you maybe give us another paragraph or two to just summarize the whole thing so that we can all understand what you just said? If there's one thing you would leave us with, what would that be?
Absolutely. I think that what I've learned, what the team has learned over the last two and a half years, essentially since our inception, is the key importance of building the partnerships, particularly with residents that play a key role in this, and helping build the capacity for not just city staff, but for residents and businesses and others to get involved and be part of the solution. And they can play a lot of different roles. And I think what this model and what our work has allowed us to do is really tap into that excitement, help people envision and see the potential of what they can do in their community and what it can be. And we need to harness that energy, and we need to build on that. So I think that's-
Does all of this require money? Or does some of this just require giving our fellow citizens some of the visions that we may have as to where this community can go relative to where we are now?
That's a great question, and I think that's something that's always top of mind. And I think, for example, the work that we have undertaken to try to test some of these ideas, if you will, on the ground, you know, at no cost or very low cost, a lot of these feasibility comes into play. So is there something we can just easily tweak that's an existing program to get better outcomes? And those things have minimal or don't really change the equation. Some of the larger things where we have dramatic disinvestment in a given area and, you know, the market has essentially failed, those are probably going to require a large investment of money. And, you know, those are longer-term implementations that we'll have to bring partners together and figure out how to tackle. But a lot of these things we can start chipping away at by just taking some of these great ideas that come out of the community, that come out of staff, that come out of council members' interactions with the community, and figuring out how do we implement these? How do we change what we're doing to better address those needs and support where people are already finding success?
And I think, too, one of the keys is how do we make this community an exciting place for people to live and want to come in the future? And I think that's probably uppermost in the mind of the innovation team. And we hear this from some of our key employers. How can we attract as a city the best and the brightest? What can we do to make this, you know, the best city in the United States of America? I thought it was interesting during your presentation that you stated something that's a pretty revolutionary concept, not really. You said, "City can't do everything, but we can bring to the table some of the stakeholders who can make things happen." And I know there's going to be a lot of changes on West Main Street in the next few years and a lot of changes throughout the entire city. If we ever get the CSO done, et cetera, et cetera, these are all pieces of the puzzle that are going to help create a new Peoria. I appreciate your work very much, but we're not as smart as you, and we need to have something, at least for me, something that's easier for me to understand and explain to my constituents. But I know you know what you know. But got to make certain that people who are listening at home understand everything that's being said and what it means for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Officer Corso for your work with this. You've been heavily vested in your team, so I do appreciate it because a lot of what you're doing is humanizing the city part of, you know, we talk a lot about dollars and cents here, but I think what your team is doing is showing the human side of what the city can do. And with that, I'd like to move to receive and file.
Okay. Motion received and filed. Seconded by Councilwoman Agathon. Additional discussion, Councilman Recregal.
Just a comment and a thought. First of all, thank you and your team for all the exciting work you do. I think any room that you can walk in where you're encouraged to write over all the walls and make sure that ideas are not lost, that they're captured, and then they get to be the springboard for everything else, that's an exciting thing to do. And I appreciate the time to, over the past two and a half years, to really have gotten to see things go from fruition really into not only action, but into a solid form that we can see. And I think that there's a lesson here as well that as we start to really work on key issues that are facing us as a city, probably lessons that we can learn that we're going to have to work at these in very new and innovative ways, not only on the situations and problems that you're solving, but on the things that are solving, that are in front of us. Because what you're really teaching us is that we're going to have to be more efficient in what we do, and that may be in dollars, it may be in energy, but it's really looking at that long-term solution. And I think that that's probably going to be one of the keys that we're really going to take as a larger community out here. Thank you for your work on that. But one thing also, too, that you talk about, and it's one thing to take best practices from another city and then just, you kind of leave there and you come back and you see what you can do with it. But there's communication and a relationship that you're building out there with other people in the same field for other communities. Can you just touch base a little bit about that? Because I think that's another key component here.
Yeah, I think, and I may have used jargon on this, so I apologize, but, you know, entering into this, kicking off the presentation, I think one of the great takeaways from the model, and we've certainly gone beyond that, was I mentioned the 27 or so cities that have this same program, I-Team, Innovation Team running in it. But beyond that, it built a whole network where we were able to just reach out to, you know, small towns in Illinois or other peers or folks that aren't peers but are dealing with this in a novel way and be able to kind of create those connections. So it's a huge network. And I know kind of sharing and collaborating with peers has always existed, but I think that it's becoming more of a norm. We have certainly, just we did a recent peer exchange with Des Moines, and as a follow-up, we had other staff that we didn't meet with call us and set up interviews with us to try to find out what we were doing with specific issues. And now we have kind of an agreement to touch base once a month or so to share how we're doing in various areas where we're working on the same challenges. So it's a huge asset for the community. And obviously, it's not just about, you know, the innovation team. The whole point is to kind of create these connections between staff and elected officials and others so that we've got this network and we can just get better and smarter and, again, more efficient, but maybe more importantly, more effective at solving some of the challenges.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Get my mics on. There we go. And thank you, Officer Corso. As you know, I'm a big supporter, and I commend your work and efforts. I do just want to comment, last night, I think it was last night, yes, I was at the Help Shape West Main Street Corridor, I guess, public engagement meeting. And I think that really highlights how successful you've been at building partnerships and supporting community stakeholders that are already being successful. It was held at Sheridan Studios where, you know, that whole little area has become successful with business owners on their own. And it was just remarkable to see people participate and help develop the ideas that are eventually hopefully going to become projects that the city will support. So I just wanted to highlight that and commend your work and efforts, also with the Wells Farm and working with Gift in the Moment, who's a nonprofit that's been very successful. It just shows what you're doing is working, and I appreciate it and support it and hope we continue to have the I-Team working hard to make this the best city, like Councilman Grab said, in the United States. So thanks.
Thank you. Maybe I'll just, there's no more lights, Mr. Corso, but I would just like to add from my perspective as well, you know, a few years ago when we applied for this Bloomberg grant, I don't think we really realized exactly what it was we were asking for, nor did we anticipate that we'd even get it. So I applaud everything that you and your team have done, not only to get that grant, but to make the strides that you have over a very short period of time. Kind of alluding to what Councilmember Grab mentioned in terms of the need for us to continue to grow in this innovation space, we're in the last year of that Bloomberg grant. So I think it's going to really require us through the city manager and through the discussions that council members are having throughout the community to help everybody understand just how important this is. Just in the slides that you showed us, you've already received close to a million and a half dollars in grants, which was as much as the total Bloomberg grants were over three years. So, you know, we've already doubled the original investment that Bloomberg made in our community. One of the really cool things about this Bloomberg grant, and for people that don't know, is they award a certain number of these grants based on what the community wants to try to accomplish. And the special part about it is they don't have money for every community to do a project like this, but they share these information, these projects and the information with other communities. So CSO, for example, is really how we got our foot in the door. We've really done a lot in that regard. And I think that even though our staff was working on a green solution to CSO, the innovation team added a whole nother layer of thoughts to that process. So a lot of communities out there are dealing or have yet to deal with the US EPA on CSO, but these type of things are going to help those other communities. And that's what makes these Bloomberg grants really special, is that they put the money out there, they challenge communities to use innovation and to use collaboration and to think outside of that proverbial box to come up with ways to look at different solutions to these problems. And, you know, we're really blessed here with a community that really does collaborate. They really are in a state of mind where they encourage each other to figure out how to tackle these problems. And I can say that without the innovation team and through your leadership, that we've come a long way in a short period of time. So, you know, keep it up to the community. I think the community, and especially in light of some of the news that's happened here lately, is maybe concerned about, you know, so what are we doing about, you know, encouraging more entrepreneurs and more startups? And how is Peoria faring in regards to using innovation? And how do we disrupt the typical city bureaucracy or government bureaucracy to look at these things different? And I think that our community and people that are watching this are going to find out that we really are ahead of the curve in a lot of those ways. So I guess it's a challenge not just to you, but also back to us, that when we're out in the community, we make sure we're educating people on the importance of the innovation team and what they're doing. Keep in mind, this innovation team is just a couple of folks. They're leveraging that with a lot of people to participate in the process, but Mr. Corso doesn't have a staff of 10. So they're really doing a lot of good work. We appreciate it. And it's going to be important for us as we continue to move forward that we find a way to justify the work that you've been doing. So thank you for that. Looks like we have one more comment, Mr. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to say thank you for all the work that you've done on it. Tremendous work that you've done so far here. And I had some questions, too, and the mayor kind of alluded to that. So outside the CSO, because I believe that's how we got started with the projects, are you able to branch off and work on other projects at this time?
Yeah. So the way that the model is set up through the innovation teams program is that you essentially every year and a half or two, depending on your challenge, try to pivot or essentially pick up another priority area to work in. So, I mean, it depends on the realities on the ground, but for us, it was this shift, you know, starting late in 2016 with this conversation with council to get into Neighborhood Scale Economic Development. So the work plan is that we'll continue through 2018, working in Neighborhood Scale Economic Development. But the idea is that then we would look at, again, you know, potentially pivoting and/or adding another area to work on and build partnerships around.
Very good. And, you know, part of that, you know, during last week, the governor was in town, had a meeting with small business owners. I'm a business owner of a technology company, was invited in that, and there was some really good conversation that happened here and some feedback given to the governor. And, you know, I've had an opportunity to talk with some of the business owners afterwards and would like to get together, and maybe this is a vehicle for us to formulate some ideas and thoughts to help reshape more for the small business, technology, maybe even some of the startups to contribute here who want to help solve some of the issues that we have in our community. So I just bring that forward and willing to help bring those businesses together with you. Back to the current projects that you're working on, we certainly would like to see how fourth district neighborhoods could be involved with it because I'm not too sure any of them have been invited to any of these projects or not, but we would certainly like to contribute where we can and would certainly welcome any type of pilot project in fourth district as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Grab?
Manager, you're a, when this grant runs out, what is the current plan?
Thank you, Councilman. The current plan is, has been a kind of a phased absorption of the I-Team into the city's budget. Currently, Director Corso's paid out of the general fund, and the other two members of the I-Team are paid out of the grant. And eventually, we would be transitioning that and absorbing that as part of the general fund budget.
Is there a possibility of this grant being, when it runs out, does it run out? Or can we get in another one?
You know, we're working towards an extension of some of the unspent dollars that we have, and we're hopeful that that's going to occur as we look at next year. But I think once this grant's done, this grant is done. I think the intent behind the Bloomberg grant from the very beginning was that eventually this either gets absorbed into city government, recognizing the value that it provides, or if you can find other ways to fund it, that you would look that way to do it.
If we, and who knows what's going to happen with our funding streams and so on, what's going to be funded from the federal government, but- going to be funded from the federal government, but, are we looking at maybe folding this into community development? Or its own standalone?
This would remain, this would remain as part of the manager's department, which is currently the way it's funded currently.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate some understanding, because I do think it's very important that we just, you know, continue with the energy that Anthony Corso has created with his employees and not just let the grant run out and let everything go down the drain. So, this is affecting, I think, the culture of the city of Peoria, Manager. I think you would concur that, you know, some of this may very well influence how Public Works views things. Public Works communes or communicates with the Chief Innovation Officer, same thing with community development. Policing crosses all of our departments, what we're learning and what we're trying to do. So, I think that it needs to remain part of our city government. I don't know exactly how you want to do that. You're saying maybe keep it under the control of the city manager's office?
I do think that the vista that the manager's office has provides the I-Team with that ability to work across all the departments versus, you know, nesting that in one of the other departments that we have, and I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, we have a motion to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. That motion is unanimous. Again, Mr. Corso, thank you for your presentation this evening. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business. Seventeen dash three fifty-three is a communication from the city manager and the community development director with a request from staff to defer this item until February 13th, which is an ordinance amending the Unified Development Code related to signs.
The staff has requested a deferral on this item. Before we put that motion on the floor to defer, is there an information the council would like to give the manager regarding signs? I know we had this discussion last meeting, but, seeing none, we have a motion to defer. Councilmember Ruck Regal seconded, and Councilman Oeller, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three eighty-nine is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2018-2019 biennial budget relating to the use of the North Side Business Tiff Fund Balance.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to ask for a two-week deferral until February 13.
Motion to defer, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Is there a discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
If there's no further unfinished business.
Do we have any unfinished business, unfinished? Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a follow-up question to the city manager, just about the status and the plan for his analysis on consolidating township with the city, just if there's some kind of timeline.
Thank you. I think that we had previously discussed trying to have a policy session in February. I did have a conversation with the township supervisor with the transition that he's made in his office to the voucher system. If the council wouldn't object, he asked if we could push that off until March, and if that would be okay, we would, you know, have a, schedule that policy session for one of the first meetings in March and have that discussion, if that's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Yep.
Okay, unfinished. Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to thank Dr. McKnight, I think she's left, but I wanted to make sure that she knew and her manager knew, city manager, that she did an awesome job for us on January 13th, that Saturday, where we had the 10 o'clock meeting at Manuel Highs Academy, the 10:30, the, excuse me, 11:30 meeting in the East Bluff, and the 1 o'clock meeting at the library downtown, providing residents and interested individuals with information as to where the city was in our attempts to assist with the Kroger closing and how those things were coming. She did a phenomenal job. She presented in each one of those. We kept her out all day, and she, I just wanted to make her aware that we appreciated her efforts to remind the community that we've been working on additional grocery stores since 2013. So, when this announcement came to us one hour before, the public was made aware of it, it wasn't something that we had to ramp up to start working on. We had already been working on it and will continue to work on it. And there's a lot of things happening right now in that space, and I want to thank everybody for all the participation that they've had. The community, once again, always rallies around when there's an issue like this, and they did in this case, in the South Side, on the East Bluff, and just folks generally who came to the downtown library, because they just wanted to hear what was happening, and they learned that there's a lot of things happening. What I most appreciated was that our citizens are not waiting for us around this horseshoe to make things happen. They are actually doing it themselves. They're contacting people themselves, they're contacting organizations themselves, and that's totally appropriate, because we're only 11 people here, and we have a ton of citizens who have a lot of contacts and resources that they are pulling and bringing to bear, not only on this topic and issue, but on things throughout our city. And I wanted to let them know that it was very much appreciated that they were, are so engaged. We had 75 people at 10 o'clock in the morning, on a very cold Saturday morning, at Manuel Academy, and the principal there, the staff there, were very accommodating. I want to thank Superintendent Karat for all she did to make sure that that happened for us. They even provided coffee, and that was totally unexpected. And when they wheeled out the cart with the coffee on it, it, I thought, yes, somebody appreciates the fact that it was cold that morning. So, thank you to Peoria Public Schools for what they did to accommodate us on the last minute. Thank you for the library for accommodating us, and I'm sure my colleague is going to thank the East Bluff Community Center for their attentiveness in helping to bring people together there. The other thing I wanted to bring up as old business, we talked about this last year, and with all that is happening with all the developments, there's just so much that's happening, that we can't really stay on top of providing our citizens with information as timely as we get it. And last year, we talked a little bit about public access TV and how we could utilize that as a vehicle to convey information to folks. And we were going to look into that more, and I'm sure you haven't anything to report to us tonight, but if the next time you can come back to us and let us know how we can leverage public access so that we can run this information on a loop through that public access system, so folks can just turn on that TV and see what's happening and where things are happening and want to get involved and where to be, and some folks don't have smartphones or internet or social media, but a lot of us do have televisions, and public access TVs is one of those, well, they call it free, but is it really free? But one of those easily accessible television stations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Unfinished business, Councilman Montalongo.
I thought we were under new business here, sorry.
Okay. Unfinished business, Councilwoman Agerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for the city manager regarding the River Trail apartment complex. So, now that Assistant City Manager Chris Setty is now doing his new job, I'd like to know who is the point person, who will be managing it, and if I could get right now an update on the status of the request from the National Park Service, and then perhaps, you know, just like a short update as to what we can expect.
The National Park Service has given us the temporary green light to go forward with this if we're able to meet certain conditions. We're still looking at whether or not and what it's going to take for the city to meet those conditions. Some of it is predicated on the determination of the value of the, from the sale of the Rocky Glen project. So, that's one aspect that still needs to be discussed. The issue of who the point person is, as of this point in time, I will be the point person on the project going forward until such time as the Assistant City Manager position is filled. So, you know, I think that's the status that we have right now. We're still trying to pursue this in order to really ascertain what our requirements are under the letter that we received from the NPS.
So, do you have any timeframe? I mean, is there an idea of what the timeframe is?
You know, I think that they've given us six months as part of that timeframe, is my understanding, and I'll have to clarify that with Mr. Setty as we talk about the transition over this, but that we do have a period of time in which to come up with that longer-term solution.
Okay, thank you.
Unfinished business, Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I have two more items under old business. First, related to the Riverfront Trail, I'm wondering, with the recent announcement, I think last week, of several board members, I think 10 resigned from the National Park Service Board, and whether that's going to have any impact on this project, and if you know or if you can check and let us know.
We can certainly ask.
Okay. And then, secondly, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things related to the grocery stores, since Councilwoman Moore brought that up. And I've attended, I attended all those town hall meetings, they were fantastic, so I thank both my colleagues, Councilman Riegenbach and Councilwoman Moore, as well as Leslie McKnight, I think, who stepped out for putting those meetings together. They were very good. And I've attended several other meetings where that issue seems to be the number-one topic for people. And I just want to make sure, it's my understanding that maybe the mayor is in contact with Kroger or has had some conversations with them, and if the staff or other council people are talking to Kroger, some of the things that have been brought up to approach Kroger about is, one, to see if they'd be willing to provide a shuttle service for individuals on the South Side and the East Bluff to some of their other stores with those two stores closing. Another that's come up in some of my conversations is asking Kroger to provide delivery services for food, for groceries, for residents living on the South Side and in the East Bluff. I know that they don't provide that service, but they do provide the delivery of pharmaceuticals to residents in those areas. So, I think that's something that we should ask Kroger if they'd be willing to consider at least on a temporary basis why we're trying to come up with some solutions. And then, another issue that I think, I think you're aware of it, Council, city manager, as well as the mayor, there was an email from Roger Sparks, who asked about the accessibility problems with the Kroger store on Lake and Evergreen, and to make sure that we discuss that with Kroger as well. So, I'd just like to make sure we're exploring those, as well as, you know, having conversations with Schnucks and Hy-Vee, who do provide delivery of groceries to residents, to see if they'd be willing to do that free of charge, and also to residents on the phone rather just through online services, because I know not everyone in those areas has access to computers or uses them on a regular basis. So, I think all of those things that would help us and that we should explore that when we're looking into this problem. Thank you.
Seeing no further lights for unfinished business, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we're at new business.
New business, Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. My question or comments go forward to the city manager. Couple of years ago, I believe it was a couple of years ago, we passed a ordinance on snow removal in front of businesses in commercial areas, and these last snowfalls that we had, I really think our businesses could have done a better job at getting the snow removed in front of their businesses or properties. Having some discussion with Public Works, they're under the thought that it's supposed to be a complaint basis that somebody calls in before we go to enforce or have a discussion with the property owners, and just trying to understand if that's the case or not when we passed it.
Yes, the ordinance that we passed is complaint-driven, and there gives some caveats on there, like if we plow snoreback on there, that residents or businesses would not be ticketed.
So, yeah, so I was under the understanding that it wasn't complaint-driven, and perhaps maybe we need to reconsider that. That should be something that, and across our city, businesses, I think, schools that weren't cleaning the sidewalks, and I'm not sure if we consider apartment buildings to be a business or not, I know it's residential, but it's pretty much a business, and we could have done a much better job, and somehow we need to get that communication out. I know it was really cold, and people trying to get through the snow to the businesses, and I know we want to change Peoria and that image of we're closed because of snow in front of businesses, it doesn't give a very good image for us. I know we're trying to make it look like we are a city that's open for business 24/7, and we could have just done better overall. Mr. City Manager, I guess I'd like to see what the council, you know, their thoughts on that, and perhaps having that discussion to move away from just a complaint basis to action taken by city when the sidewalks are not cleaned, if we could have that discussion in a future meeting.
Sure.
One more item, Mayor. I guess this is somewhat still, could be considered old business too, but as far as new business, I know at some point we're going to be having some discussion on the stormwater utility policy, where the community will get a chance to weigh in on it. I don't think we have any scheduled meetings at this point. I'd like to see a couple of meetings happen here before we pass a final version of the policy. Had the opportunity to meet with concerned businesses in our community, those from the car dealers and as well as the hospitality businesses, restaurants, who would like to be able to weigh in on the policy. We have a meeting set up with Director Reese on February 6th, and he'll be giving some feedback to them on their properties and what that dollar amount is going to be with the fees. But what I'm requesting is that we set up some public meetings where those businesses, and I guess residential, could come in and learn about the policy.
I have Councilwoman Moore next.
Mr. Mayor, I've got two items. One is directed to the city manager. I wanted to find out where we were with our parking enforcement officer. I remember at one point we were down to one, and then we became fully staffed, oh, that would be Director Reese. We became fully staffed up to five. I know that we've lost some now. Are those officers that are out writing the parking tickets, are they AFSCME workers or are they a different union?
Our Parking Enforcement Division is made up of four employees, one supervisor and three parking enforcement officers/technicians that write all the tickets and then collect all the money out of the parking meters and do any repair, and those three enforcement officers/technicians are AFSCME members.
Okay. The reason I bring this up, it has come to my attention that there's been a non-AFSCME member writing tickets. Is that acceptable?
The supervisor is allowed to write tickets.
Okay. I just wanted to check, because it came to my attention, if that's allowed, I'm good with it, as long as it's allowed, and the AFSCME union won't call me up and say, no, that's incorrect. So, thank you. The second item, I wanted to alert the residents. The second item, I wanted to alert the residents of the south side that live within the MacArthur Highway area, that, let me back up and explain, that every Monday at 9:00 at Ward Chapel Church, Ward Chapel is inviting the community to come in and just have a, it's more of a networking opportunity, so the community can learn about what's happening in the community directly affecting the south side. But for the most part, the information that's shared is information that anybody in, in the city could take advantage of. And so, that happens every Monday at 9:00 at Ward Chapel Church, Ward Chapel Church is located on the corner of Garrett and Richard Allen, at the base of MacArthur Bridge. And the reason I bring that up is this coming Monday, this past Monday, we had a, at the meeting, the discussion involved a lengthy discussion about transportation opportunities and options, since the Kroger stores are closing, but it also included a conversation about a proposed needle exchange that will be conducted at the NAACP offices. That has not started yet, but they plan to start it in mid-February. And so, I wanted folks who are living in that area, if they have a question or want to find out more information about this needle exchange, that is suggested to start mid-February on Saturday mornings from 10:00 to 2:00, that they are welcome to come out this coming Monday to Ward Chapel Church at 9:00, where this discussion will happen. They are going to be inviting Dr. Tamara Alt, who is part of the Jolt Foundation, and I believe Chris Wade, which some of you may know, may be there as well, I'm not certain who they've, have committed to come. But it's a discussion, when we talk about informing the community about what things are happening in the community, I think this is something that is very important for folks in the community to learn about. There was a lengthy discussion at the South Side Community United for Change meeting this past Saturday, and they were there then, and I think people learned a lot about what's happening with the opioid crisis, and everything that surrounds that. So, 9:00 this coming Monday, Ward Chapel Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. The first I just am excited about, those of you that are frequent listeners to these meetings know that I've been advocating that the city develops some development guidelines for incentive tools, and they, staff has been working on that, and working with developers and other stakeholders on developing those guidelines. I think they were sent to most of the council this past week, and the city is going to host two public meetings for the public to give input on the draft of those proposed guidelines. A press release, I believe, went out today, and those two public meetings are scheduled for January 30th at 6:00 PM at the Gateway Building, and then the second meeting is scheduled the next day, January 31st at 3:00 PM. And those will both be held at the Gateway Building on the second floor. So, I'm making that announcement today. It's also posted on the city's website, and it will go out, and it has gone out to the press, but if anyone out there, the public, wants to give some input on those guidelines, please come to that meeting, and you can go to the city's website to look at the draft of those guidelines before the meeting. So, that's my first announcement. The second announcement, it's not an announcement, I actually have a question. I guess it should be directed to the City Manager about what the plan is, or maybe to the mayor, for the, the offer that we received from the CEO Council with regards to paying for the due diligence, if the city decides to pursue the water company buyout. So, I guess my question is whether we're going to have a discussion about that, what the timeline is, and what the plan is for addressing that offer.
I think the anticipation would be for this item to come back to the council for discussion and consideration of the offer that was made by the CEO Council.
Do we know when?
I don't know if we've confirmed a date on that, if that was going to be the next meeting, or that first meeting in, or the second meeting in February.
Well, I think we can, it really, Mayor, it depends on, if you want to accelerate it, we can have it on the 13th, or we can bring it forward on the, on the 27th for consideration.
It'll be on the agenda in February.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Agerson, I had your light.
Thank you. Not to belabor the point about the snow removal, but when we crafted the ordinance, I was pretty engaged in that conversation, and as I recall, we did leave it that it would be a complaint-driven enforcement, and that's just because we don't have the capacity to enforce most of the regulations that we have in our city. I mean, every ordinance we have is enforced based on complaints. So, if you want to get compliance, if we want clear sidewalks, we have to do a better job of informing the businesses that they are first in line for this clean sidewalk approach, and the idea was, is that eventually, it would work its way into the neighborhoods, because people would appreciate the value of having clear sidewalks. Now, I am pretty sure we haven't done anything to inform the businesses that their obligation is to clear their sidewalks, because we don't have a listing of the businesses in our city. So, we can circle right back to the registration of businesses. Here's another benefit, we'd have a way to communicate to the businesses that they are obligated to clear their sidewalks. They clear their, their parking lots already, and it's not like this is an everyday occurrence. We will go several weeks without having any snow, and if you look at the snow, the history of snow, City of Peoria gets several inches the first week of the month in the winter, and then there's no snow. I brought back some flyers from Evanston. I circulated those to the Public Works Department. You are now the new Director, Mr. Reese. At the time, it was Director Rogers, and I don't think that, you know, there's been a lot on your plate, and I am not being critical at all, but I think we all, the city council people, all got an email from a very thoughtful resident, who said she thought we needed to have clear sidewalks, and maybe the way to go after it would be to just encourage people to do the right thing. And in her email, and I think it's a great idea, she said we could have public service announcements on the billboards, and I know that the City Manager, and the mayor, and a few of other people, we are all going to be persuaded to kind of rethink some placement of billboards, and in exchange, Adams Outdoor Advertising, or is that the name of the company? Yeah. They're willing to work with us. This would be a perfect opportunity for them to help us educate the pop, you know, the, our citizens, that it's the right thing to do. And we know it's the right thing to do, because when you look at those sidewalks, especially on Knoxville, on University, on any of the major thoroughfares, you see footprints in the snow, and you watch people walking in the streets, and it's dangerous. So, I, you know, I don't want to, you know, be always so frustrated with our staff, but Mr. City Manager, I do believe that there's more than one way to skin this animal, and I, you know, I think a good, solid, positive public relations initiative would be the first place to go, and punishment to be the last resort. I think our citizens and our businesses will step up. I have a lot of confidence in people's understanding of what's the right thing to do. So, to finish this up, what would we need to do to get this started? Mr. City Manager?
Well, I think that, that to, to get it started, we would need, I mean, I would want to sit down with both communications staff that we have, Stacy, and the Public Works team, and develop an approach towards the model that Evanston has talked about with hang tags, working with, you know, the, Adams has been a good corporate friend of the cities, and has done a number of public service announcements. We can continue to address that approach, that way. We could certainly look at other areas where we're utilizing public service. I think to Councilwoman Moore's point about using Channel 22 where we can to, to get that information out, we can certainly do so. You raise a very valid point about the, the challenge with not having a business registration, where we could then come back to all the businesses and say, in a simple email blast or a simple text blast, here's the information that you're looking for, and this is what you need to do. It's starting to snow outside, be prepared. So, I, you know, I recognize some of our shortfalls that we have with that, but I think that we can certainly, from a staff perspective, address it.
As a follow-up, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so, let's put some, let's put some timeline to this. So, what would be a reasonable time to get a presentation, or just to inform the council that this is, you know, a, I don't know how long it's going to take us to get this business registration idea implemented, but I think it's clear to everybody that we need it for more than one reason. So, that is a hurdle, but it can get done, but then the messaging for winter is really, you know, the window of time is running out. I mean, thank goodness, it's going to be spring, and everyone's going to be very happy not to be, you know, worried about the snow anymore.
Let us put our heads together and come back to you in two weeks on the 13th.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I'm heartened to hear the tenor of the conversation go from our city employees being involved in the snow policing and more snow suasion, trying to get voluntary compliance. And we have a vast amount of voluntary compliance in the city. The invisible hand of Adam Smith comes in handy, businesses do what's in their best interests, and if people can't walk down the sidewalks to get to their business, or they fall, that's a problem. We do have, of course, the issue on West Main with what are we going to do with the If they're putting it in the street, I don't necessarily think that's something we wanted them to do, but, you know, we have, we've discussed that before, we've got an unusual wrinkle there. So, I appreciate the way the conversation has gone this evening, and making people more aware, businesses more aware, that aren't currently doing it, of the importance of this. Director Reese, there is an article recently in the newspaper about the pothole crew. What do you have, two men doing it right now, as you have the opportunity with the freeze thaw cycle going out and filling holes?
Currently, now that the snow's done, and we're warming up, today, we had 20 guys out filling potholes, and that's the same plan as for tomorrow. We actually, we have a scheduling meeting every day at 1:30, and right now, that's our most important thing on Public Works' plate.
I appreciate that. And one other item that's very important, and that's the Douglas County MacArthur Bridge project. That's due, it's about to commence, I believe, this spring.
We're waiting for the final approvals from the state level, and then we are looking to start construction, or put it out to bid and start construction late April, early May.
And we'll have detour plans and so on for the folks. This is a bridge to, to of our great districts in the City of Peoria, and it'll affect the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment and a question for our City Manager, and just to add to Councilwoman Agerson, maybe an idea, and I know in the, in the 5th District, we have 37 homeowners association that are registered with the city. I'm not sure how many we have throughout the city, but I think it'd be good to build a relationship with all the HOA presidents, and, and send them emails about some of our problems, and, and a lot of our homeowners are very proud of our subdivision, and maybe they can help us enforce some of these, these ideas, number one. And number two, bulk to the phone calls I'm receiving lately has to do with the condition of our roads. I know we spent some money last year, we hired a company out of Atlanta, if I remember correctly. When do you estimate we'll start the conversation about, I mean, spring will be, no, it's right around the corner, in a few months, we'll start repairing some of the roads. I mean, have we received the report, and have we started, put a plan together, and prioritize which roads will, will be fixed first?
Yes, we've received the report. We're working through it, as we put our, since the budget has now passed, and with the dollars that were allocated, and our goal is to bring a plan back for public, for all of what Public Works will be doing in 2018 in February. Most likely, the February 27th meeting, we'll have that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the snow removal, I absolutely agree with Councilwoman Agerson on communicating first, and absolutely, that's the direction we should go with. Overall, I mean, the snow removal, it helps the business do better, and it helps the residents. I mean, there's a win-win in it for both. And until we get it, I guess, just even stopping by to remind them, I don't think we have any penalties with this ordinance anyway, but until we get something figured out, even if it's a stop-by to remind them that they have to clean their sidewalks until we get the, a final communication, and perhaps even using the social media would be another way, maybe to reach the, the business owners, until we get this figured out. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights for new business, Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the City Council.
Citizens to address, we just need a name and address for the record, please, five-minute speaking limit. Mary Hayes.
My name's Mary Hayes, and I live at 2915 West Ann Street, which is two blocks down from Kroger's. Now, you know that Kroger's is closing, and I don't have transportation, and I usually walk up to Kroger's to get my groceries. But now, I'm in a situation where I have no transportation, I have no grocery store, and I either have to get a ride, or I have to do without. So, this is a sad situation, and I'm very disappointed in my councilperson, because today, at this meeting, I had to hear from the at-large councilperson as to the options that we're going to have. And I'm thinking that maybe the people that I represent just don't matter to her. I'm thinking that maybe we have to do it ourselves. I'm thinking that maybe I will, maybe I'll step up, because we aren't getting anything from our councilperson, because she's too busy with Chase Bank, and OSF, and other things in the 1st District that doesn't pertain to the people that I represent. I think that, given the situation that I'm in, with no transportation and no grocery store, that you should reflect on this, because this is a dire, straight thing that anyone could be in at any time. It could happen to you. It could happen to the people on the, on the north side of Warren Memorial, but it just so happens that it happened in my district. It happened to my friends on the North Valley. It happened to my friends on the South End, and we are angry. We are very angry, and there's 11,605 registered voters in 61605, and I'm going to tell you, come Election Day, you're going to hear from us. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
We have an executive session.
We have an executive session.
Councilperson Peterson.
Session to discuss the City Manager's compensation pursuant to 122C1 and to review executive session minutes pursuant to 2C21.
Okay. We have a motion to go to executive session by Councilwoman Jensen, seconded by Councilman Ruckeligle. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Gray, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Jonathan, Jonathan Allman. That was a long time ago. H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. This meeting is adjourned.
Did not bring one with me, I'm sorry. Sure. Anywhere on here, in particular. Who I am.
Corporation counsel.
(laughing).
Counselor dying of the flu, he said.